This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Public Meeting for Tuesday, September 28th. Before I call for public participation, for those watching on TV or Facebook, you'll know we are in different surroundings tonight. We are Council Rock Primary Schools. During this year, we'll be going to each of the schools to have a meeting based on the almost completion of the capital project. Very excited to be here. Just great work being done here. We'll hear about that later. We will be in Fraz on October 26th, at the high school on November 30th, and at TCMS on January 4th. So very excited to be able to take this show on the road, as it were. Thank you. I do know that we have a person for public participation, Malaney Bernhardt. You are welcome to come up right now as well for public participation.
Take this off again?
Yes.
Thanks. Hi, it's Malaney Bernhardt again. You're gonna see a lot of me.
Welcome.
I'm just gonna keep coming. So what I'm gonna do today is, this represents your brain. No, actually, it represents your face mask that you all have on. This sand represents any virus floating around in the school, healthy air, the COVID-19 virus, and just gonna give you a little demo right here. Here's your mask. This filters, the smallest thing it filters is about .3 microns. Viruses are .1 micron. So, any questions? It basically goes through your mask, and I just wanted to let people know that. And because I know this school receives funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, I know that we are continuously gonna maintain masking, social distancing, all the COVID-19 protocols. So my question to the board is, when does this stop? Do we need this funding to continue with this charade? And so what I wanna say also, and I do this because I care about the community, I care about the kids. I've lived here for 25 years. I love my town, okay? But I wanted to let you know, for you environmentalists out there, there's, we use about 129 billion masks per month, and 3 million, that's 3 million masks per minute. And I know you guys have seen them in the sidewalk throughout the town of Brighton. Where do most of these masks end up? In the ocean. So start, I'm just trying to think, you know, what you're doing, what you're wearing, what you're using, and how often you're throwing it away, and where is it going? Some other quick facts, 96 unique pathogens are found on children's face masks, because we know children are kinda dirty little creatures. 47 studies masks are ineffective at stopping COVID. 32 studies negative health effects of wearing masks. Seven masked polymers, including inhalable nanoparticles. And 71% case patients have always been wearing masks and still contracted COVID. While the masks really serve no level of protection, it's more of just a thing that makes you feel better, but really, if this was a true pandemic emergency, you'd be wearing a full hazmat suit completely. The air, everything goes in and out throughout these masks. So they really aren't working. But what they actually do do is, they lower oxygen in the level of blood. So you're breathing in your own carbon dioxide, your bodies, your organs are meant to get a certain level of oxygen every day. So I want you guys to think of that. Every time you put a mask on, and every time you mask our children, they are getting less oxygen than they require, and it'll affect them long-term, and there are no long-term studies of what masks do to you, especially children, developing children. It also causes anxiety, sleep problems. You see kids that don't wanna go to school because they're uncomfortable, they're worried about, you know, they're gonna wear their mask incorrectly, they're gonna get yelled at. When they really wanna breathe, I don't know about you guys, but it's a lot for me to wear a mask just for this meeting. I can't fathom wearing it all day in school. I don't know how they do it. I know a lot of you guys can probably go in your offices and take your mask down, or put them below your nose, and take a break where these kids are not getting that. The other thing I was gonna say is, most of these kids have been playing with each other outside Eddie Friend's houses all summer long, but now they go to school and they have to be masked. So I just kinda don't understand that. And what I want you to do, I have a handout, I'll leave it with Jimkin. For all of you guys, it's informed consent, because I don't feel like there's been improper informed consent on a lot of things that are happening, so I brought some information. And this ties back to my previous lecture of censorship. And you're gonna go and try to Google some stuff, and you're gonna find conflicting information, which is fine, but I'm asking everybody to do more critical thinking on any of these things that are coming down from above. Don't trust the CDC, the FDA, the Department of Health. If you start to do the research, per my other previous websites and things that I suggested, you'll start to see conflicting information. And I'm just asking people to really start asking, what are we doing? How long is this gonna go on? And how long are our kids gonna be in masks? I mean, their plan is for years. And so really pay attention to that. This is not to get back to normal. I just want you guys to really do some research. And that's it. And it's only because I care about everybody, and I really want you to be breathing fresh air as often as you can. Thank you.
Malaney, before you go, I just would like to respond for a second.
Yeah.
I think I am as unlikely to convince you of a different perspective as you probably are to convince me.
Yeah, I know that.
To be respectful. Although I do respect that we have a different opinion. But as an organization, certainly in the public eye, and as leaders involved in a public health crisis, it also is immoral to not simply also say to you, and to say to people watching, that you presented a set of information that is completely contrary to the set of information that we have and that we're operating from. And I would just go back to where you finished with, if you've decided you don't trust the CDC, the FDA, and the DOH, then I probably can't convince you, and I'd be happy to sit down with you and walk through the studies that we're looking at that actually say to us that masks are incredibly valuable in stopping the spread. And frankly, the places where people have not worn masks, more people are dying, and the places where they're wearing masks, less people are dying. The questions about why, over the summer, while outdoors, is an entirely different conversation. There's a variety of reasons. And I don't wanna debate you point by point, it would be disrespectful to you presenting information that's contrary. We just have an obligation to point out, in the public space, that we are presented with very different information that says exactly the opposite. And whether we took money from the American Rescue Plan or not is not the point for us. It is that the health information we're presented with says that this keeps children safe, and the adults safe that we work with as well. We're also mandated by the state right now to do that. Regardless of the money, it is a mandate across the state in order to have kids in school that this happen in all schools.
Yeah, and I understand that you're gonna follow procedures and what's recommended and mandates. I'm just letting people know to do more of their own research and really consider what you are doing to children. And I'm just bringing a different point of view, because I want people to know, we're not all on the same page, and we need to be able to have discussions about it.
Appreciate that. Respectfully received, and just wanna make sure we're pointing out to people watching, listening later, that we have very different information and a different perspective. So, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any others for public participation. So next up will be approval of tonight's agenda, as is in front of everybody. Moved by Andrea, seconded by Susan. Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Also wanna go through and do approval of the minutes from our last meeting, September 14th. They were obviously in the packet that we received. Approval of those minutes. Moved by Julene, seconded by Karen. Questions? Any other comments regarding last meeting's minutes? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes. Very excited to hear about our Brighton Facilities Improvement Plan update. About three years ago, we approved a capital plan that affected all schools, primarily or most importantly affected Council Rock because of the expansion here and the allowance of what the community asked for, which was full decay. So in just a second, I think we're gonna have Lou Limo and the team come on up and talk about things that went really well, maybe a couple of challenges we had. We're gonna hear from some of the team that worked on Council Rock. I don't think we can overemphasize this enough, but I will also point out that our buildings and facilities folks, in all of these buildings, not just Council Rock, in all of the buildings, have done an amazing job, working with these construction teams, working with our construction management partners in campus, and always looking out for the best for our kids, for our teachers, for our staff, and sometimes finding better ways to do things, being there to make sure that what we wanted is getting done. So huge kudos to that team. All they did behind the scenes has been amazing to sort of watch, so very grateful for the work they have done. Lou, however you wanna call people up?
Good evening. First, I wanted to start by thanking the Board of Education for this opportunity. You've gotten a chance to see the construction, but here you get to hear, now you get to hear kinda the rest of the story from our design team, from our construction management team, and I'm just really proud to introduce the team and have them talk about what we were able to accomplish in this project, and some of the challenges that we were able to overcome. So I'd like to invite up our, really our OACM team, starting with Gary Huffman, our project executive from Campus Construction, and then we'll introduce our design team. And also like to recognize Benny Orlogio, who can't be here today. Gary's gonna be speaking on behalf of Campus First. Go through here, and then we'll hear from everybody, and then recognize our team. So, thank you.
Thank you. So just the arrow on the right there. Good evening. Thank you for that introduction, Lou. I appreciate it. I wanna give a special shout-out first to Dr. McGowan, Larry Davis, Lou Limo, Mr. Goldman, and Mr. Rivers John Novelli, but could not have done this job without them, could not have done this project without their support. They've been phenomenal. They've had our back the whole way. It's been a challenging project. $30 million done in a building that has children in it. We basically took this building, tore it down, and put it back together again, in the course of almost three years. We shovel wet the ground back in February of 2019. Just to touch on a couple of accomplishments, we created site access to minimize disruption to student learning. I think SWBR and its group will talk about that a little bit more. This room you're sitting in was created. The old kitchen was torn down, and this was, the space was redeveloped, and it provides a great deal of benefit to the district, especially, we know, at the time we started this project, that COVID would put a different demand on the district for this space and the needs for it. So I guess lucky, we'll take lucky every time, right? Continuous works while school, there's concessions, I mentioned that before. School was never disrupted throughout the course of this construction. As I said, as I mentioned, we started in February of 19, and I would like to think that we did the whole route collectively, the design team, the district representatives, the contractors. I wanna just recognize that everybody pulled on the rope in the same direction and accomplished a significant amount of construction work in an occupied building with staff and students. And it was a personal assurance of campus at the time that you brought us on board, that that would be our priority, was safety to students and staff. Improvements included, where we came in tonight, the new bus loop and parking lot, courtyard, which is stellar, you'll see some pictures later on. There's quite a few slides to see some of the highlights. I understand you just took a tour of the building this evening. Athletic fields and two new playgrounds. The new library, which is absolutely stunning, gorgeous. HVAC system, so again, given lucky, we'll take that every time. The new HVAC system helps you in the world of COVID with your air conditioning, your air change systems, and you also have two new boilers. Removed and installed new paved walkway to Babcocks, so recognizing that the public uses this space a great deal. They have now a nice new surface to come back and forth and access from the neighborhoods. Installed radiant heated floors in 15 classrooms, as well as this room you're in. Updated life and safety systems with a new fire alarm, so all throughout this building is a whole new fire alarm system with new audiovisual and P8 enhancements to it. Sprinkler system, this entire building is now sprinklered. Site lighting, the LED lighting throughout outside, and it also helps with, it helps the neighbors, so you get really good lighting, but it doesn't really disrupt their lives too much with great big bright lighting, so it's pretty cool. New visual friendly and secure entrance, as we all came in tonight, you can see, and it's an extremely secure entrance, and I hope everybody can rest assured that it's gonna serve its purpose. Challenges, because it was an existing building, we did not raise the roof. There was all that sprinkler piping, all the new HVAC systems had to be fit between the ceiling and the deck itself. It was a big challenge. Phasing of the project allowed for continuous education and administrative use. Construction of the front addition, we tore, as we tore this whole building down in front here, and never disrupted school, and it was pretty significant. Asbestos abatement, we occurred, we came upon asbestos in the building. Again, dealt with that off, during vacations, or during breaks, or during summers, so we worked around that, so there was never any abatement done when the kids were here, and, but it had to be removed in order to keep the work going. So, and then the site access, which was created to minimize disruption. So we had a, we had a whole phasing logistics plan that was developed. It was very intricate, and it allowed for the district to maintain its daily activities and keep education going. So those are just four or five of hundreds of challenges that we encountered. SWBR will be next. They're going to talk to you about what their accomplishments were with design, and...
So it's my pleasure to introduce our design team. So the architectural design team and our engineering design team. So we have Steve Rebholz, the principal from SWBR, we have Joe Kassoric, and we have Lynnann Weiner, if you could say enough to and be recognized, because she was a lot of the legwork. And we have Bruce Knapp from ME Engineering. With all the mechanical and electrical engineering, that was a significant part of this project. And who was unable to join us today is Matt Tomlinson from Marathon Engineering. So here from our design team. Thank you.
Thanks, as Lou said, I'm Steve Rebholz, and these are just some photos of that, some of the accomplishments that Gary talked to. You're gonna see similar things, but from a design standpoint, we were really looking for flexibility. Flexibility in this space, we're in flexibility in the classrooms, and so that was one of the big accomplishments. We talked about the secure entrance. I think the library space, hopefully everyone agrees, is much more enhanced, is flexible, and it really celebrates reading and literacy. There's the Makerspace, which is a new space to the program to allow for project-based learning. The courtyard has age-appropriate opportunities for outdoor learning, learning in an outdoor setting. And one thing that you won't see, but is a fact, is that we configured the addition to take on a second story. Because the site is limited and not able to be expanded, if in the future, however far away that future might be, if an addition is needed, we have space on top of the building for a second story. And so that would prevent loss of other site areas by allowing construction on top of the building. We mentioned the bus loop and buses on-site. From an infrastructure standpoint, Bruce Knapp from ME Engineering is here, and the HVAC system is a complete, a completely new system from top to bottom, and I can't overstress the importance of that. The old system used to be under the ground. It was buried in pipes under the ground. And so the roof height really wasn't there to put in the system above ground, but ME Engineering and our architecture team and campus figured out how to get all that stuff up there. So that was a real accomplishment and an improvement. All of that equipment, the boilers, the hot water heaters are high efficiency. The HVAC system has improved filtration, so there's a lot of great improvements there. And as Gary mentioned, we were able to get some of that existing asbestos out of the building as part of, as part of that work. We abated the crawl space and the ceramic tile mastic that was in the corridor. All of that was accomplished as part of this outside on the site. For those that had experienced the site before, it's low and it's wet. It's still low, but it's no longer wet because of the site engineering that occurred there. So that's a really tremendous, tremendous improvement there. And we were really able to upgrade and upsize that storm system so that it takes on the water it needs to take on in those rain events. Challenges, as Gary mentioned, we talked about the limited space. Any interface between new building and existing building is challenging. The physical size of the site made fitting all of the site components a challenge, but we were able to get all of the buses onto the site. If you remember before, all of the buses couldn't fit on-site, so that was, that was a challenge that we were able to overcome. RNE requirements were evolving, you know, this is all behind-the-scenes stuff, but we were able to overcome those challenges. We knew about some asbestos, but some was discovered during the process, and that was well-managed, and we were able to take care of that as well. So some photos, you can see the bus loop from above, and the addition from above. I'm gonna turn it over to Joe Kassoric, who's gonna talk a little bit about the flexible learning environments.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. It's really been just an honor and a pleasure to work on this project. You may not have seen me much during the process of the construction, because Lynnann and Steve have really been a huge part of that. My focus, and particularly my postdoctoral research, is focused on the flexible learning environment and how that impacts student engagement. And so why I say I'm so honored, I feel so privileged to be part of this process, is because Brighton has taken a very innovative step, not just for your own district, but across New York State and even nationally, and how you impact the way students learn. And so the flexibility of the spaces you've created, specifically those with the classrooms, you've had an opportunity to walk through the building and see what that looks like. And so this is a progressive method for supporting student-centered pedagogies. And so you can see in the library, we'll call it the Media Center, Makerspace, you saw the transformation of that space, and you see all this furniture is mobile, and the Makerspace itself is unique to the building. So this is specific to what was there. Sometimes we forget. Larry mentioned that it's been three years since this capital project started, and before that, it's been five years since Lou and Matt Tappin and myself took that faithful journey to Cambridge, Mass. to discuss what does it mean to really create engaging space. And so we quickly forget what was there before, but in the traditional learning environment, this is what we look at. And the key to flexible learning environments is really understanding how do we address students' abilities, background knowledge, and how we create their interest, or mold their interest. And so I talk about workforce development, and it sounds kinda odd when you're in a primary school to talk about workforce development, but as we know from the research, when you put a task in front of a child, if it's connected to what they are looking to do in the future, what might be an opportunity for the future for them, the engagement increases significantly. So when we look at space here, and if you take a look at these pictures, you can see that the classrooms are no longer a classroom and corridor model, but the district took that innovative step, that step forward and said, "We're gonna create a decentralized model for education. We're gonna create these breakout spaces for different grouping sizes of students." And so you can see in between the classes, the flexibility to close or to open off, and for educators to co-teach. Students to peer-to-peer mentor. These opportunities are going to now happen here, and so that this is the first step in that process and that trajectory for change. You have created a model for greater equity and inclusion for students and staff alike. So very exciting. You should be very proud of what the district has done for education, and I say that not just for your students and staff, but the opportunities and the case study that this can become for New York State to understand what education looks like for students in the future, for jobs that don't exist yet.
Thanks. Again, you've had the tour, so you've seen many of these spaces, but these photos really kind of capture for the folks that are watching in, some of the transformational change that occurred. Along the way, oh, here's that courtyard, I wanted to touch on this a little bit. For those of you that haven't seen it in the daytime, it just offers many, many areas for outdoor learning and age-appropriate activities outside. So that's a, that's a real asset for the district. Playground, we talked about. Along the way, though, getting there, getting to the end, took a lot of amazing work, so that's why I wanna really acknowledge the campus team. There were multiple prime contracts on the job, and keeping them all working in the same direction and working to the phasing plan was an enormous task, and campus did an outstanding job there. And lastly, not lastly, but I do wanna acknowledge Lynnann Weiner, who's been with this project from beginning to end, and really has been the heart and soul of this. Anyone who's been a point person knows that to be a point person and to manage a large team is amazing, but from the very beginning, from the very first study to the opening of the school, Lynnann has been there, and I just wanna acknowledge and thank her for her dedication and passion. And thank you all, thanks to Brighton Central Schools for allowing us to participate in this project.
Thank you.
Again, I'm really proud to be part of this team, this design team, the construction management team, and I just wanna take a second to thank Matt Tappin, the principal of Council Rock, and Marin, who was back there too. You handled the brunt of this, so you made it work. We did our job, and the design team and the construction team, but you managed the building, and so we wanna recognize your efforts. And I'd like to just take a second to recognize our B&amp;G supervisor. If you gentlemen could come up, I would appreciate it. So throughout this project, we had already flattened out the Buildings and Grounds Department with John Novelli and Rob Lou's taking on a significant workload in supervising and administering department. Then in 2017, we approved this capital project for 65 million, approximately 65 million dollars, and gave them another job on top of it. And I just, we need to recognize their efforts to sit through every PM meeting, every OACM meeting, and they were at the table every single time, giving input to the design team, giving input to the construction management team. They made this their own, and particularly John in this building. This is the John Novelli Building, and his legacy is gonna, is gonna last forever. So I just wanted to recognize these gentlemen. If you have a couple words to recognize, you're welcome to. I know they love to speak more than I do, for sure. No, but thank you, and thank you to our entire team. We were really, this was not, this is a difficult project. It was a complex project. There was some definitely heads that, you know, budded throughout the course of project, but we were a team throughout the entire project, and I think you can see the results of it. There's still more work to do, but I'm just so proud of what we were able to accomplish in this project, and so happy to see the kids. I have a kindergartner at home, and to see the kindergartners coming here, it's just, it's been really special to see this school you're open, so.
So I'm sorry. Yeah, please take 60 seconds and talk about when people walk out, they should look at that rock in front, and tell them the story of the rock in front, because I can't believe Steve and Gary didn't talk about the rock.
There's a story behind that.
Yeah.
It was last summer, we were out front digging the ground.
No, no, go ahead, Gary.
We were out digging, kind of, psych年人 was out digging, we were making, there was a storm, water, military utilities in the ground, so we were digging, and they struck that boulder, and I called you, and I think I called you, and I said, "Hey, I found something in the ground you might want."
Which is a weird way to start any conversation.
And he said, "What?" And I said, "Well, there's a boulder, it's the rock in Council Rock." And he's like, "Yes, let's do it." So they took two really significantly large excavators to get out of the ground. And I'll give a shout out to Albert Davis. Albert Davis, who had stepped up and did, don't need a crane and a crew to come out, pick it up and move it and set it where it is today. They have registered 18 tons on the crane. It's enormous. And, but here's 1,000 years ago, we rounded this project, so it just seemed poignant to be able to capitalize on that opportunity.
That's really neat.
The only bad part was Matt wanted it on the other side of the floor.
Matt, you can move it anytime you want. I just wanna say a couple of things. One, I wanna thank John and Rob for their idea and around their daily uniform from here on out. I think it was great for you guys to... I think it was great for you guys to come up with that. It was great. In all seriousness, first of all, to the whole team that's worked on this, thank you. This is really, really incredible. Again, I think who said it the best, but to our team here in the building, Matt, Marin, and now Shirley's had the tail end of it as well, and the entire staff for their patience in making this happen. It's been very, very special. To the board for your support in this project and for creating this whole new space. It's been great to see your eyes as your eyes are on it tonight. It's really, really exciting. But to John and Rob, I do want to say something different and special because it's not just about this project. It's about the work that you've done throughout the district, in every one of the buildings, all the time, dodging this, dodging that, managing this, managing that. Less people, less materials, every single challenge anybody could possibly imagine, and the two of you always overcome it and always ask, you know, how can I do more? How can we do more for kids? How can we do more for families? And your answer always is absolutely, we can make that happen. So I just need you to know, K-12, yes, this is incredible. Tonight, that that this is what it's about. But I do want you to be acknowledged to for the work that you do all of the time for all of our kids and how important that is. So thank you for that. And to Lou, while you're thanking everybody, it's you that makes this happen too. So thank you for that. And you'll want to kill me and probably flatten my tires if I go on any further, but I just want to say. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Your your leadership is key to this and that should be pointed out as well. So thank you very much for that.
Any questions from the board for Lou and the team? Anything else you want to know?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say, wonderful as it is to look at the pictures, they don't even do justice to what it feels like to be in this space. The library is magical. If I could just like move in, I would do that. It's just the most wonderful space I've ever seen. And I asked Allison while we were touring tonight, I said, is this a new model that's being used? And she said, no, this was, this was the vision of our Council Rock librarian, and it's truly incredible. So trust, trust me when I tell you that these pictures don't do it justice. It's just spectacular. So thank you to everyone who who made it happen.
It's really incredible. And to that point, and then I'll stop, the, we are going to do something here to invite people in to see it.
Me too.
So you you make a good point.
You can't explain it.
No. We'd like to button everything up and have it, you know, in in all the little pieces that you wouldn't see when you're walking through because it looks beautiful right now, but, you know, there are some pieces in the front hallway. There's little things that we'd like to do then and have really a grand opening and invite people to come in and see it because they supported it. And it's their building, whether their kids are here or not, it's their asset and their building. We'd like them to be a part of it too.
Yeah, that would be great.
Great. What's that? Thank you again all very much. Much, much appreciated. Next up is principal reports. What's the protocol if we're in the school? Does Matt go first or does Matt go last?
I don't know. I think Matt gets the, he goes first. He goes first.
Matt, we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to do Council Rock first. Matt goes first.
Okay, that sounds good, Dr. Hall.
It'll be faster that way.
Well, good evening. Welcome to Council Rock. So honored to have you here and to echo the thoughts of the team that was here and thank them for everything. There were lots of bumps in the road, but we came through it really well. So it is really exciting to be able to give you this update, having all of our students back and full-time. We are really thrilled to be here. So welcome back, first days. So I will not lie, our first days were wonderful, but they also were exhausting. Ms. Flores and I went home and all of the teachers and any staff here went home and went to sleep. Because when you have 700 students, 500 of which haven't been in the building or no, and if you take all 700, because we shook the whole building up and moved everyone, no one knew where to go. So there was a face of, morning, you know where you're headed? Mm-mm. Okay, who's your teacher? Okay, what's your name? There was a lot of hurting and getting them where they needed to go. So we made a lot of adjustments in routine. So arrival, breakfast for the first time at Council Rock. Really kudos to our food service staff, Nicole Vandermeade, and also Patty Luce, who is wife to our Rob over there. She, they did amazing things getting breakfast and lunch. So for the first time, two-thirds of our kids hadn't ever been through a lunch line. So getting them through those routines, full-day kindergarten, so thankful to have them here all day. But that was a realization that about 12:30, when I had 20 crying kids in front of me, I was like, what's going on? I don't, and I was like, oh, you went home at this time last year. So and then returning from remote and, you know, not underestimating students who hadn't been in the physical building and hadn't hadn't been in the physical space with their peers. So we used a lot of persistence and a lot of thinking flexibly. Our habits of mind came into play. And also dismissal. We have had two of our three curriculum nights. So kindergarten and first grade were last week. Tomorrow is our second grade curriculum night. To make sure that we didn't gather too closely, normally we would start with a whole group meeting with myself, with Ms. Flores and all the special area teachers. We did a video with that general information. We're able to send that out ahead of time so parents could view that. That included special areas, extended studies, second step, our social emotional program, and habits of mind. And people were able to watch that at their convenience and then really focus when they got here to hear the amazing teacher presentations. Special thank you to our PTSA who offered our child watch, so we had childcare available so that that was not hopefully an impediment to our families. And it was great. We had great turnout for our kindergarten and first grade, and we're hoping for the same thing for our second graders tomorrow night, 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. You saw this, but I think that the space is magical. There is no doubt about it. But the space with children in it is the ultimate. And I walked into the library and just happened to be in there, and it just struck me, them using it the way that we planned. Again, kudos to Adal Motzkowiczus, our librarian, and Galsaki, who is the library team in there, completely rethinking the organization of the library and seeing kids use it. Thanks to the amazing parent volunteers. We had parent volunteers this summer who helped us to complete that transformation. We couldn't have done it without the PTSA. So we have many new staff members. And part of our initiative this year as a team was really to make sure that kids and we ourselves were getting to know each other. So as you walk around our building, you'll see All About Me posters for almost every staff member. They're still working on them, but really giving a personal sense of who they are, who their families are, what they like, and really giving students and families a glimpse into who we are. It only strengthens our relationships. So kindergartners, again, we have nine new kindergarten teachers, so a lot of new ideas and fresh ideas. This is just one of the great things. Students were talking about how they're feeling, they were feeling about getting started. So we've got curious and we've got happy and excited. We had a lot of happy and excited coming back. But curious, we had a little anxious, we had a whole bunch of the range of emotions, but, and it tied to Wemberley Worried by Kevin Hanks. And then a special thank you to our BEF grant that we had that now has four Lego walls for our kindergartners. And students are able to build on the walls and really interact, and they're a wonderful addition to our kindergarten classrooms out in the hallways. First grade, our extended studies teacher, who is now full-time, Mrs. Yaman, started with habits of mind and sharing the four focus habits for this fall, which are gathering data through all senses, questioning and posing problems, thinking interdependently, and creating, imagining, innovating. And she is introducing those to all classrooms, but this is a first grade classroom where students were working together to create a garden with all, using all of these habits. So it was a really great lesson that she has developed. And our second graders started out the year writing, so this is a summer to tweet about. And they created birds, and this is Mrs. Banbury's class, and then wrote about their summer and started to learn about the craft of writing. So upcoming events and dates, so this, I said already, second grade curriculum tomorrow night. This Thursday and Friday, we have our picture day. If you are a parent of a Council Rock student, you should have received which day your child is going to be. Teachers signed up for one of those days, and we will be taking pictures in a couple of the empty spaces we have. Just a reminder, Friday, the 8th, is No School for Students Superintendent's Conference Day. We've got great things planned. And then Monday is No School Due to Indigenous People Recognized and Columbus Day Observed. So any questions for me? Yes. That is from Mrs. Jordan and the students saying how much we love you and appreciate all that you've done for us as the board, so.
Maybe we can all take a picture there before we leave.
Can send it to Lisa tonight.
Yeah, cool.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Marin.
Good evening. This is so exciting to be here. So my first board meeting, first presentation. I am honored to be here, and this is just a really special night to be here and walk through with Matt. It just makes me feel that much more grateful to have been part of this process. Now kind of being a little bit removed, stepping back, it has a little bit of an effect of like, wow, wow, we we made it through that. So such a beautiful space. Great job to Matt and Shirley. Truly, we're really kicking it off at French Road this fall. Our assistant principal, Caitlin O'Neil, and I really have started just forming a wonderful bond and relationship that's founded on communication and collaboration. And I owe her and Dr. Ryu all the things because she's really just spent a lot of her summer catching me up to speed, all the little nuances and the things that are important to know about the building that you just might not get in the first month or two. She's she's just done an incredible job. She's incredible as a leader to our students and to our faculty as well. Our PTSA, it's really interesting to see and to work with our PTSA in this new role. They're wonderfully supportive, and they kicked off the year with one heck of a welcome back breakfast for our staff that literally bowled people over. People felt so appreciative. It's definitely one of our love languages is the building of, you know, snacks, food, breakfast, lunch. And it was just so truly appreciated and they went above and beyond. In the fall, Ms. O'Neil and I did a series of Zoom recordings for all of our students. So at French Road, we really focus on star qualities as the foundation of our behavioral and school-based expectations. So basic pieces that we follow right through from Council Rock, respect, self-control, responsibility, kindness, and integrity. And we roll that out to all students in a lot of different venues throughout the building. So they're seeing and hearing from Ms. O'Neil and I in the classroom about star qualities and what that might look like or not look like. They're also hearing about that from us as far as it relates to the cafeteria or the playground and how they're demonstrating those throughout the building. Linked to star qualities is our Brighton believers. So we also are calling on our teachers and staff every month to recognize, again, those wonderful qualities that we want students to exude as it relates to Brighton beliefs. Each month, we're focusing on a different Brighton believes attribute. And so to start it off, our first one was respect. And teachers then choose one student from that space in every single classroom, in every single space, including the cafeteria across the building, and a student's name is up outside of that area as someone who has really demonstrated a great deal of improvement or really exudes that quality through and through while they're there day in and day out. And this is a student and our wonderful, wonderful food service staff, led by Mr. Tom there in front, who noticed in the lunch line that the cafeteria folks had some burn holes in their pot holders. And so he went home and took it upon himself to hand-make some new ones for them and showed up to school and was just so excited to show care and show respect to the staff. And that's exactly what we're looking for and what we want to celebrate for that student and for their family as well.
Those are some nice-looking pot holders.
Right. He's very talented. Yeah, he's so proud. So all across the building, we're getting back to what we know. And as Matt mentioned, it's so wonderful to have everyone under one roof. I keep saying that every morning to the students on announcements. It's just a great feeling to know we're all here. We're all here together, kind of sharing the same experience. So classrooms are getting back. They're just starting up reading groups. They've engaged in several assessments, really trying to figure out this year where students are coming in after having a variety of experiences this last year and a half. So completing map assessments, DIBELS assessments, but getting to use math materials and getting to take part in reading groups is the fun of all that work and the result of all of those assessments. Students are learning the building. It's really been so much fun getting to see the new third graders and getting to see them learn the building right alongside me. And so it's it's great as students kind of explore and find new efficient ways on their own and adjust to the new procedures and the expectations that is French Road. And if you haven't driven by the school lately, "Real life is better than Zoom" is a quote from one of our students, who just couldn't have put it any more perfectly at our welcome back picnic. And you can just feel that in all of the classrooms and in all of the classroom spaces. So we we have reminders about masking all around us. And Ms. O'Neil had this wonderful idea to highlight one of our emotional support animals, Cosmo, who is the friend of Ms. Brightful, who is one of our E and L teachers. And so we really rely heavily. It's it's funny, it's really cute that Cosmo did this for us. He's our poster child. However, Charlie, Cosmo, Biscotti, and Winnie in the office, it's amazing to me how much our students seek these furry friends out and really rely on them. We've already had a couple of students this year who've made a 180 in the short time that we've been together with the help and support of these animals. And it's, there's, it's no, you know, dipstick measure. It's a direct result of being able to spend time and build that relationship with the staff member as well as Cosmo and specifically Charlie too. So some upcoming events that we have, we're taking part in Spirit Week this week alongside the high schools. We prepare for the fun events this weekend. We have fourth grade curriculum night coming up later this week. Similar to Matt, we restructured our curriculum nights just to provide one entire night per grade level to just mitigate how many folks we have in the building. So that will be coming up later this week. Our special areas will also be there from 7:00 to 7:30 with all eyes on them, allowing to, for folks to kind of meander throughout the building and meet their special area providers. We'll be starting our winter wear drive with PTSA on the 4th. And then the third grade curriculum night will follow up on October 5th, similar format to fourth grade as well. And our extended studies parent information night is coming up. That will be led by Mrs. Renee Whidore, who will be speaking with parents and giving some information about how our extended studies program continues to grow and evolve at French Road in really positive ways. Later on this month, we've got some really fun activities planned for Red Ribbon Week with the help of our mental health staff in collaboration with the mental health folks here at Council Rock as well. They really do a wonderful job with that week. And then at the end of the month, I'll be hosting another meeting with the principal via Zoom. And we're going to really dive into restorative practices and our work around all things restorative, restorative discipline, conversations and practices that will be supported by our mental health staff at French Road. So I'm really looking forward to that. And then French Road will also be hosting everyone for this board meeting next month as well.
October 26th, we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, yeah. So any other questions?
Great job, Marin.
I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Just want to say before you leave the podium, this is the night of thanks, but it's all very sincere. You've gotten off to such a great start, so congratulations to you.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Jim.
Got to help out, Jim. Matt helped me.
Look at Tina.
There you go, man. Go for it.
Thank you, everyone. It's nice to be here. Congratulations to my colleagues before me and to Dr. Hall for having such a great start to the year. And I'm equally as excited to be here before you as this is my second year in this role. However, the first time before you live in person, so it's exciting to be here. So we'd like to start off by saying this was, if you walk through 12 corners, you will see these posters put out throughout the halls and in our classrooms. The one on the left says, be here, be you belong. The school belongs to all of us. And the one on the right, we are born makers. We move what we're learning from our heads to our hearts through our hands. These are quotes from the book from Dare to Lead. One of our teachers, Mrs. Amy Marin, had the opportunity to read the book. And she was moved by some of the quotes and she took it upon herself to make these posters for our staff and to put throughout the building. And it's really, was well-received by our staff. And it's been a nice way to create the culture of belonging and to really have that, send that communication to our staff and to our students. We started the year off with our sixth grade orientation for our incoming sixth graders this year. We were excited to have them all in, given that they are making this transition to 12 corners. We were led by our 12, our TCMS Strong students, who were able to lead our students through the tours of the building. With the orientation, our students were able to get an overview of what to expect throughout the course of the year, what their schedules would look like. the course of the year, what their schedules would look like, a good tour of the building, and also an opportunity to work with the lockers and meet with their counselors as well. At the end of that orientation, they did receive their new devices, to which they are new to this year, and moving from iPads at French Road to now using laptops at 12 Corners. So it was a really fun-filled day for them and an eye-opening experience for those and for parents whose children are first-time middle schoolers. It was a great opportunity to them for to walk the building as well and to become acquainted with the building. Our arrival and dismissal, with us coming full-time back, five days with full staff and full students. For me, I was looking forward to witnessing what this was like, being out there every day, being able to see what it was, and so far, it's been a wonderful experience, it's been smooth, all families have been really following protocol, moving up to the right spots to drop off their students, and it really has gone very smoothly. We noticed, yes, there is traffic on Monroe Avenue, however, with the gradual movement of traffic through, it has really been smooth with no issues whatsoever so far, so we've been really proud of that. Same with dismissal, the process has been the same with families picking up their students at Monroe, at the Monroe Avenue exit, and it's gone very well, so we're very happy with that. Lunch at TCMS, we have a tent outside and for our students, and following protocol with safeties, we do have our students sitting at assigned seats, and then once they are done eating, they do go outside and have an opportunity to hang out with their friends, run the field and have some time under the tent as well. It's been extremely well-received by them, they're really enjoying that time outside and it gives them a nice opportunity to take a mask break and to spend some time with their friends before they move on to their next class. So we're really happy with the way things are going so far with that, and we're very happy to be ensuring the safety of our students as well through this process. Community building relationships, if you walk the halls at 12 Corners, you're going to see a lot of our work that our teachers are doing with our students and really re-establishing and connecting with our students. This is work done by our students, describing themselves, who they are, and making connections to the work that they're doing in the classroom. And so it's been really nice, not only is the work that they're doing posted, but we also have a lot of our staff members who are building in community circles to build that sense of community in our classrooms with our students. At our last faculty meeting, we did also close out our faculty meeting with community building connections and circles with our staff in a way to reconnect and get ourselves honed into a sense of community as we move into the school year after having been away for so long without our staff. So it's been really nice to have that sense of community and relationship building. Past and present here, we have some examples of work going on in the classroom. On the left side, you see Mrs. Cucetos, really diving into history and archaeological work, connecting the work of archaeology to our students and having connections with our students, to who they are today and connecting it to the past. And we see work on the right, advice Elvis as our Albus, rather, not Elvis, but Albus, as students are connecting the characters in the book that they're reading and really giving advice to what students coming into sixth grade can really connect to and look forward to as they go into sixth grade. Spanish class has been fun to go into, we have Mrs. Lopez on the right and Mr. Dennison's class on the, on the right there, and Mrs. Lopez on the left, rather. Going into these classes, it happened to be interesting with Mrs. Lopez, they were doing work on the alphabet and identifying the special character of N with the tilde, the enya sound, and so when I happened to walk in, happened to be in the middle of that conversation, she happened to pose a question, "Where have we seen this more often posed throughout the course of the day?" And as I walked in the class, ironically, they were like, "Mr. Nunez's name has the letter," so it was kind of walk into that, and you see that on the right, Mr. Dennison's class, using me as the principal as an example in their warm-ups and communication as well, so that was kind of, kind of fun to walk into at that time. New beginnings here, we have new staff and staff who have transferred into 12 Corners in addition to others, but what we have on the right, on the left, rather, is Mrs. Calamia, who transferred over from French Road in our special education class, and she has been doing a nice job working with our students and immersing herself into the community of 12 Corners. What's been nice about her transition is that she is coming from French Road, so she has a strong connection with those students that she's working with because she's had the opportunity to work with them while at French Road. Mrs. Karazi is in the middle, she is new to the profession, fresh out of school, working with our seventh and eighth grade math students, and has been really a great addition to the team. Her students have described her as kind and welcoming and really building a great sense of community. And on the right, we have Mrs. Rigney, who has made a transition from the AIS program into the classroom and has really been re-acclimating herself to the classroom and has been enjoying that transition as well. Our library, fully renovated now and full use, it's been nice to see our students go in and be able to utilize that space to its maximum capacity. We have students collaborating at tables, working, gathering books, and also using those nice independent spaces for them to work and take some time away from class as that space is nice to have and colorful in its new renovation. Engagement and collaboration in classrooms, we see our students working together, fully masked, but yet not taking away from the engagement of the learning and really using the opportunity to enhance the learning, connect and to move forward with the work going on in classrooms. And outdoor education, that kicked off last Friday with our first team of sixth graders going out to the Sunshine Rotary Camp out in Rush, and what an experience it was, I was out there with them all day long, and it was just great to see our students really having a great time. The weather was great, they have a full day of activity starting at 9:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m. The only part of the experience that they have past practice is not the sleepover, but they have been able to experience every activity, every station that they have. You see the smiles on their faces from every catch catching fishes and first-time students who have never caught a fish before, so to see that excitement on the face was truly a wonderful experience. As we continue with that, we see them engaging in games. The young lady on the left, if you can't really tell, but she was really sharing a moment of tears and happiness because her team had just won the tug-of-war, so it had been the first time that she had been a part of that process and really, truly excited about winning that. And then lastly here, making memories with it, really our students connecting with staff, coming out to share their time and their experiences to make this a really memorable event for them and ending it with a campfire with songs and, and activity and fun at the end of the night. So really, it was a great experience for me last Friday, today before coming here, I went out to see the second team out there after school to see how they were doing and again, having a great time, and our last group will go out this Friday, the 1st. Just some upcoming events, we have our Activity Fair at 12 Corners on the 29th, our Open House on the 6th, Super Tent Conference Day coming up on the 8th, No School on Columbus Day, and a kickoff to our Activity Nights for grades six, seven and eight as they're coming, looking forward to that along with Red Ribbon, and as I've noted there, Outdoor Education for our sixth grade students. Homecoming this past week, as noted by Mrs. Marin, we are also participating in that, so tomorrow, we will be wearing our beach and Hawaiian gear, as it's been fun to see our staff and students take part of that as we get into the festivities for homecoming. Any questions?
Another great start.
It has been, thank you.
Questions? Jim, just a comment, the lunch situation, you guys have really worked hard to make that work and work better for families and kids, just want to comment on that and appreciate that, a great, I know that's been a big lift for you, you're in the weird sandwich, so to speak, of high school kids who have an open campus that move very freely but also are well able to articulate who they may have eaten with in terms of contact tracing, and elementary kids are being assigned seats and staying in one place and managing that at the K5 level indoors, and then trying to find some middle ground for that, so thanks for working on that, too.
Thank you very much.
Tom Hall.
Evening, everybody, hope you're doing well. Tonight is a great night to be a Bruin, and I'm excited to be able to start the school year as the Bruins, and we're not going through that whole process like we did last year, we're just excited to get back and be back in school altogether. Of course, we had to start the year back at school with our usual COVID-19 protocols, so we've done all that, numerous meetings, things that we've, we've discussed, and just with this slide, I want to thank Nadine Dyke, she's, everybody knows her, in our copy center, she came up with this design, and it's kind of how we've been trying to use it with our high school students, say, you know, you know, we know everybody's tired of the masks, but we've got to wear them for a variety of reasons and this is what we're going to do. But all the things behind just starting the school year, it's, you'll see, there's several things we're getting back to what maybe a normal year would be, in addition to the masks, but the, you know, Rob is here tonight, and just to say thanks to the security in our, in our building and all of our custodians, because coming back with 1,258 students in the building compared to, you know, half that last year, and trying to get everybody to eat and do all those things, we start off with kids in the gym, the bleachers are pulled out, then phys ed comes in for phys ed, especially if it's raining, the bleachers go back in, then for flex, they come back out for the period, they go back out at the end of flex, and then they have to be cleaned and then they come back out for the next morning. In addition to, if it's raining outside, we're constantly texting, "It's looking like rain," we set up the Lord Gym with seats and chairs so people can be there, in addition to having 225 outside under the tent, and thank you to Lou and the board and Kevin for supporting us to have that tent again, that's been huge for our kids, and I'm not looking forward to Thanksgiving and when that's probably going to be closing up for the winter and what we're going to do, but we're making some contingency plans. But there's a lot that happens throughout the day and on a daily basis when it comes to protocols, and a lot of people kicking in to make it work so that we can get to things like this. I happened to come along to the band room, it was the very first day that Sarah and Therese were actually going to play music, and I got to take a picture right when they were playing music for the first time since we closed in March of 2020. So it was the first time you could hear instruments in the room. There were some tears, actually, it was, it was quite a moment just to finally hear some music with all the different protocols they have, but it was fantastic. Our new art displays, I can't wait for you to come to the high school and we're going to give you a tour and see all the new facilities, but they finally have some display work in all of our cases outside the auditorium, you'll see more of that. Our clubs, back in action, we didn't have our gaming club last year, again, it was a lot more about touching, you know, the, could COVID be passed by touching and passing books and things, and that's all behind us, and now we're doing the gaming mast, of course, but getting clubs like this back in the library and all the other things that we're doing with sports and activities. First week, all the different things we normally do in a year with emergency procedures, what we're doing for arrival, the masking, of course. This year with free breakfast and lunch for all kids, the high school, that's been a huge popular item, I think we're selling more lunches or getting more reimbursable lunches than we ever have before, and Nicole and the lunch team is doing a fantastic job, and kids are so glad not to have just bag lunches anymore, that they're actually getting real food, so that's fantastic. And we're really pushing our PTSA hardship funds, we have the PTSA money, but we also have received $5,000 from a family to add to that hardship grant because our kids really need it. Something new in homeroom, we had two days of kids being in homeroom, so about 90 minutes with a homeroom teacher, and this is our alternative high school right through the regular school building, but we asked teachers to run circles with their homeroom students to get to know them again. Most of them may have known them for a few, part of the school year when they had them, a couple years ago, we didn't have homeroom last year, they watched videos, and then we had them all take a survey as part of that 90 minutes in homeroom, in addition to seeing another video from me about protocols for the building. But we had several teachers come together with parents and students to develop this survey, and the results are all shared with the faculty, just to get to know them on a more personal level, a lot of teachers give opening day surveys to students, this is to avoid them taking a survey seven periods a day, and that information's collected and shared with the faculty, and we gave them time to review the survey data, and, you know, these are questions, it could be anything from, you know, what's your, what sort of holidays do you celebrate, to what sort of music do you listen to, to what do you watch on YouTube or Netflix, to get an idea of what kids are doing and what their interests and likes are, and teachers trying to use that as part of their classroom routine instruction to, you know, build more of a community in the classroom. That's something we're going to be using throughout the school year. Of course, you know, if you see something, say something, all of our safety protocols, bigger than ever, I have a packet, our Brighton beliefs packet, that I'm going to share with you that we may develop this summer with our culture and climate leadership team, with students and parents coming together, on giving students all the opportunities to report issues if they have them. Of course, we're so excited, we have our therapy dogs back as well, and we have some new additions, Atticus has been there for five years now, Possum probably retired, won't see her again, but Homecoming you will if you miss Possum. Lily, Josie, Delilah, and our new one, Bella Rose, will be coming back. They're not all in the building on the same day, but I'll tell you what, the kids in our alternative program, throughout, into the library, into the counseling office, they are truly loved by the kids for the most part and really help us with a lot of situations. Our BHS initiatives this year, big one filing, you know, supporting the district's blueprint plan, getting back five days a week, having it successful, staying in school, not having any outbreaks, that's a huge part of what we're hoping to do. Implementing more opportunities for students to make connections with teachers, that survey was just one part of it. Trying to make our belief statement that we all want to feel safe, welcomed and cared about in the school. Upgrading and hopefully improving upon our attendance and truancy procedures now that we've been out for almost a year and a half, trying to get back to school five days a week and being in class, and how important that is, and we've got a lot of people who are going to try to keep us accountable and making sure that we're doing that. Our transfer students, we have 40 new students this year to Brighton, still hooking them each up with an adult mentor in the building, as well as students to work with them, giving phone calls home to the parents in the fall and in the spring, and meeting with those students one-on-one as we move through. We are giving the PSAT to all of our juniors on October 13th, one of the only schools in the area doing that now, thanks to Kevin and his push for that, but that's been a huge part to go from about 72% of our kids taking that exam to almost 96%, and because they're all there, they get transported and we're there. Homecomings this week, love to see, you know, all the commonalities between the presentations. If you want to come out and see the real tug-of-war, that's Friday, that's the school assembly, that's going to be taken around 2:15, doing all of our normal stuff that we have fun with, this really is going to feel like a fun time, and when we go outside, no masks, we can sit all together out on the field, we're not doing it in the gym, we're going to do it all on the turf, so we're excited about that. That's how we're going to map everybody out. Tons of things happening on Saturday. And, any questions?
No, another great start to high school as well. Questions from the board?
No, Tom, it's the same, you know, it's so challenging with 1,300 or so kids, 1,200 kids, not 1,300, 1,200, a little bit less, I don't want to, you have any more than you already have, and masking, which is tricky, but a compliment to all of you, patience, thoughtfulness and everything you've done to remind kids, keep them safe, and to our kids for doing everything they can to keep each other safe as well. And I think the, you know, 95.5 vaccination rate for our eligible kids, six through 12, has a lot to do with the conversations you're having, the example you've said, and just the overall tone in the building around taking care of each other, looking out for each other, the person to the left of you and the right of you, and that's really the way you send the message, so thanks to you for that, too.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, next up, we have approval for the first reading on four policies. Attention of a first read is for all of us as board members to have them on our radar and answer any initial questions that might come up. They'll be approved after review at a second reading in about, I think it's in a month, we look at them again and go from there. I will make note of the fact that they're all being, these four are being proposed for revision based on changes in law and in accordance with recommendations from the Erie One BOSI's Policy Service for updating, so we get recommendations from them. The four policies are, and they're in front of you obviously, Policy 6411, Personnel, Use of Email in the District. Should I read all four?
Just name a number. And we could, you can move them all together after reading the name and number.
Okay. Policy 5520, Non-Instructional Business Operations, Extra Classroom Activity Fund. Policy 7551, Students, Sexual Harassment of Students. And four, Policy 5681, Non-Instructional Business Operations, School Safety Plans. You, you've had a chance at least to initially look at them, do you have any questions at this point on any of these policies? Okay. Motion to accept the first read on all four policies.
So moved.
Moved by Karen, second?
Second.
Second by Susan. All those in favor? Right, opposed? Last item on the consent agenda, fundraising activities, we have a number of items coming up, I mean, it's the start of school, we got a lot of things happening, as we heard certainly from the principals, and a lot of the clubs and athletic teams are starting to get rolling, so this is all great to see. Motion to approve the consent agenda as listed on your agenda. Moved by Julie. Second by Esther. All those in favor? Opposed?
Just have one question there, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
It's just probably not me able to read it, what does the second one say?
Girl up.
Girl up, thank you.
Yep.
I just couldn't read it, I thought it was girl odd, and I didn't know what that was.
Okay.
I had the exact same question.
Okay. Two quick things. One, I want to thank our A V audio visual team, Bill, Mike and Ian, also obviously Kim and Dan Goldman. We're going to move around over the next few months, which means these guys are going to have to scramble a lot and figure things up in terms of the setup and making sure everything works and making sure we're on Facebook and all that other stuff. So, greatly appreciate your all effort tonight and all the running around you had to do and what you'll do in the next few schools up through and including January. So, thank you also, Kim and Dan, for all your help with that. And I'll do this for 60 seconds and I'll see if you have any other comments. Mother passed away in December, was cleaning out her stuff. And from June of 1969 is my report card from Council Rock, 52 years ago. So, I happen to bring it tonight. Yes, Matt tapped and I did well, regardless of what you say back there. It was a good one, including from my speech teacher as well. So, I had a little bit of speech language problem. So, 52 years later, you know, here we are, full circle.
Look at that. Look at the impact. Yeah, your mother would be proud of it. Look at the impact all these years later. That's really great.
It was a different-looking school than it is today.
Good reminder to us about the work we do.
Yeah. Anything else you want to add?
No, just thanks for helping us get off to a great start. It's really been fantastic. Much appreciated to everybody.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Oh, we are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.